Good afternoon. It is 4:30 on January 23rd and with the quorum of members, I'm calling the Human Resources Committee to order. Just to start off this meeting, I have received some requests or questions about public comment. I know this subject is near and dear to everyone. So, all I have told people is, of course, I will allow public comment as it comes up on the agenda. The only thing I do ask is if we can keep our comments to about three minutes. I'm not going to be up here timing people, you know, and beeping them off, but we have a call meeting at six, so we need to keep the meeting going. But people are certainly, can come up and talk anytime and express their opinions or thoughts. With that, we will start with number one, approval of the 12, 10, 20, 18 minutes. They're in your packet, any problems with them? Otherwise, I'll take a motion. Moved by Mr. Neal, second. Second by Dawn. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Number two, Human Resources reports for December.
Again, in the interest of keeping the meeting moving forward, I would just ask the committee members if anyone had any questions on the report.
Okay, then can I get a motion to accept the report? Mr. Neal, second by. Thank you.
Mike?
All in favor, say aye. Aye? Okay, and now we're on to number three, discussion and possible action on implementation options of the City of Wausau Wage Study.
All right, so at our last Human Resources Committee meeting, additional information and fiscal impact was requested for two of the implementation options. The first option, which we've been calling Option Two, is bringing to midpoint. That's placing employees where they would be in the salary range, but not advancing people beyond the midpoint. Option Three is bringing them to step without any cap. One item that I wanted to make sure and clarify was that previously, it had been explained that Gallagher was going to be placing employees where they would exist in the salary range if the progression philosophy had been utilized throughout their time with the city. That was an oversimplification. So, if someone is sitting there and using a 3% compound increase to figure out where they think they would be, they're not going to come up to the spot that Gallagher is going to do. Gallagher calculates, A, they use a really complex formula that calculates a fixed amount that you increase per year, and they use that formula to figure out where you should land. So, I just wanted to make sure and advise any employees that if you're out there trying to figure out where you think that you would be, you are probably not going to come up with the same number as Gallagher. So, just to kind of place that on the record. So, we looked into Option Two and Option Three. I'm going to start out with Option Two. Seventy-three employees would receive salary adjustments totaling $218,116.60 under this option. Positions that are funded by sources other than the levy are removed. Fifty-one employees would receive salary adjustments totaling $129,468.20. One employee would be adjusted to the maximum salary grade and therefore redlined for future annual increases under Option Two. Depending upon what annual increase option is selected, because in our next agenda item, I actually proposed two potential options, so depending upon what the committee suggests that could result in a total of three employees being redlined in 2019. Under this option, individual salary adjustments would range in cost from $24 to just under Option Three would grant to 103 employees salary adjustments totaling $470,000. If positions funded by a source other than the levy are removed, that leaves us with 66 employees receiving salary adjustments of about $300,000. That represents an increase of about $168,000 over Option Two, to save you the math. Thirty total employees would receive an increase under this option, who would not receive an increase under Option Two, half of which are funded by the levy. Twenty employees would be redlined under Option Three, and depending upon the annual increase option selected, that number could increase to 26 employees being redlined in 2019. Under this option, individual salary adjustments would range from $218 to 30, basically $32,000. Fiscal impact, I did want to, I found a correction, so I apologize. So, I'm going to run everybody through the fiscal impact here. One thing to keep in mind is that these calculations don't represent recent hiring decisions, so I eliminated people that I know that have left, but their replacements haven't necessarily been added to the calculations because that's a moving target. But our best estimate at this point is that we've budgeted for both, we budgeted $30,000 for implementation for the wage study, and that was budgeted to cost, basically for costing of implementation Option One. The past two wage studies, the City of Wausau has just brought people up to minimum and not done anything beyond that, so when we were preparing the 2019 budget, that's what we had anticipated and funded. So, we have $30,000 funded for implementation of the wage study, and based on my calculations, approximately $152,000 for annual increases. If we combine those two pots together, that gives us a total pot of $182,000. So, if we look at Option Two, we said that would cost about $130, and Option Three costed about $300,000. But we also have to look at next year's costs, because that's going to be higher. Next year's costs will also include step increases. So, the correction that I wanted to give is that, right now, we say that Option Two, annual increases and implementation is fully funded within the current 2019 budget. So, if we combine our two pots together, and we choose Option Two, and we give step increases on an employee's job anniversary date, we have enough money in our current budget to implement Option Two, as well as to implement either step option that the committee would choose to advance. The correction is for next year's costs, and I apologize for that. Right now, it says next year's costs in Option Two would be $31,000 to $56,000. I subtracted the same number twice, so that should actually be $213,000 to $238,000. So, essentially, next year's costs are the same between the two options. Option Three cannot be fully funded this year without some sort of adjustment to the current 2019 budget. The city would have to fund somewhere between $140,000 to $162,000 in 2019, and that would be a recurring expense that would have to be included in every other, every future budget. And then, next year, we would need an additional $240,000 to $242,000. That was a lot. Is there any questions?
I'll just, you know, hearken back to our previous meeting, when, you know, the overriding sentiment was that we really were looking at Option Three as the ideal, and also, we were, I think, you know, being realistic, knowing, well, I don't know, is that possible or not? So, we asked that, you know, fiscal viability, you know, was determined, you know, for the sake of this meeting. Another thing that has come up in discussions offline is if it seemed like Option Three was a bit undoable for the coming fiscal year, what if we implemented it mid-year? You know?
Mid-year would give us some cost savings for the 2019 implementation, so if we staggered Option Three implementation, that certainly would impact the $140,000 to $162,000 that we're looking for, but that would not defray future year costs. So, essentially, we'd have to find the full funding plus the additional amounts in the 2020 budget.
Yeah. Well, I think we all realize that we'd have to find funding, you know, going ahead. The question was, in our, in our previous meeting, are we bringing our workforce to the level where they need to be in an advancement, you know, scenario that, you know, gets them where they want to get over time, and can we sustain it? So, and, you know, finding money is something that, you know, it's really our job, is to find money for whatever it is we're talking about trying to afford. So, still be interested in, you know, some sort of report, you know, either from the Finance Director or the Finance Committee on, you know, these questions.
Well, I mean, if we delayed implementation to mid-year, the implementation costs for 2019 would be halved. So, that would be what would, as far as fiscal liability, you know, that would be something citywide that, yeah.
Mary Ann is here, and she is, has the numbers, and she can, she can speak to that? Would you like to come up?
So, as far as postponing Option Three, I guess there's a lot of risk involved with that, because, you know, health insurance is a huge financial obligation that the city has. We're self-insured. This year, we were able to hold a pretty tight line on our lift in the health insurance costs, but right after we were done with those negotiations and signed all of our contracts, some of the large claims came in, and so, you know, we've been put on notice that we will probably see a large increase next year in health insurance costs. So, but we don't exactly know what that increase is going to be, and, you know, like, I would advise against kicking the can down the road at always. You know, you shouldn't push your obligations off to the future and think that you're going to be able to afford it. Every year is struggle to balance the budget, and so, I definitely would, would advise against that with a mid-year implementation for a liability of this size. You know, I did go through the budget and tried to think of some options that we have, and there really is no option. It's, you know, it's going to be increase taxes or decrease your infrastructure, because right now, we pay so little of the levy each year for investment in infrastructure, so we're, you know, you're allocating about $600,000 a year, which is nothing, and we all know about the deferred infrastructure that we have. So, the only choice you would have in that situation, if you were unwilling to pass on taxes, but were interested in giving large raises to the staff, would be to steal money from your capital budget, which, again, I would not advise, because we already have growing deferrals in infrastructure and problems meeting the needs of the streets, our buildings, our IT needs. And so, I think that we need to find something that's financially sustainable, and, you know, Option Two seems to give us opportunities to reward staff going forward, coming up with a system that people understand and can use, and it allows us to move forward in that respect. So, you know, along with Tony, I would recommend Option Two.
But we've been kicking the can down the road, I mean, for quite a while with regard to staff increases, and, you know, so, I mean, we've been studying wage, wages for, for quite a while, and I think that one of these, in addition to, I know that we're kicking the infrastructure down the road, but I think one of these days, we have to come to the realization that we have to make it right with the staff. Ever since, you know, a variety of different political things have been happening, the staff has not, through the years, been able to, through the city's budget, been able to catch up. And I think that now that we have the study, because we're going to kick the can down the road into 2020 and forever, and I think somehow, we have to face the fact that we have to make right with the, with the staff, especially the staff that's been here and devoted their, their careers to the city for many years, and I think that we have to make it right. We've been kicking, like I said, we've been postponing this for a long time, and it's about time, and I don't know when that time will be, when we're going to be able to magically find fiscally responsible time to do this. When is this going to happen? We're always going to be stressed with regard to the budget, and we have it in front of us today. I'm still, I still think that we have to make it right with the, with the city employees, and, I don't know, I can't answer that, but I think it may have to go to the Finance Committee or the Mayor, the Mayor's Office, and we have to try to, in some way, instill, still in our staff, the ability for this City Council to make it right with the staff.
In the, you know, I'm no financial wizard, and I know wage, like, like, I just don't. But, you know, we, you know, we hear that Option Two seems to be sustainable, doable, and is a recommendation. We see that Option Three is unachievable, unsustainable, and not recommended. So, in lieu of something like, you know, starting at mid-year, is there such a thing in the world as an Option 2.5 or an Option 2.33, or anything along those lines of thinking? Or am I just being stupid?
You're not being stupid. I can tell you that we haven't done any research into that, so knowing what the numbers would look like, I mean, we could, we can establish a cap at any point. The midpoint was recommended by the vendor, you know, and it's also, it's a common place in order to cap those things, but, I mean, the will of the council would, would be enacted, so, I mean, essentially, we can craft what we want, but as far as what we're going to see, see as far as savings, if we were to move that cap point, it would essentially be starting over from scratch. So, it would take quite some time to do. I would say that it would take at least till the next committee meeting, possibly two committee meetings, before we'd have numbers even to look at.
Tony, excuse me, can you repeat the numbers of what the costs would be in 2020 for Option Two?
The corrections?
Yeah, what the corrected costs were?
Essentially, I subtracted the $182,000 as if we were getting a new pot of that next year, which was an error on my part, because I am also not a financial guru, there's a reason I went into HR. And so, if you add $182,000 to the numbers that you have, you would reach the correct numbers, but I will repeat them for you.
Okay.
The first one is 213,000, and the second is 238,000.
238, okay. So, and then, for Option Three, the costs would be, for 2020 budget, would be 240 to 242, so it's...
Yeah, those were correct.
Yeah, so it's, it's between the two, it's kind of, it's, you know, we're looking, so our, our big question is, is how we're going to fund this for 2019, and then going forward in, in the 2020 budget, Option Two and Option Three are going to be fun, you know, their, their costs are going to be quite similar.
The 140 to 162,000 that we find this year, we'd have to allocate next year and for all future years.
Okay.
But the annual increase, so the steps basically cost the same, irregardless of what option you choose, but the implementation costs...
Okay, so it should be 140 for the, so the 140 increase that we need, that we need to find for this year, needs to be in the 2020 budget, and then, in addition to that, the steps?
Exactly.
Okay, I think I got that now. And then, I, it's, I know, I remember in our last meeting, the, the discussion we had was between Option Two and Option Three is really the, the compression issues you get between bringing people to the midpoint and bringing people to the, to the step. And can you speak a little bit about the compression? Because I think, I think, in your notes, you did say a little bit about the compression wouldn't be as bad as it seems to be, but I, I guess I just need a little bit more explanation to that.
Sure. So, I compared the, basically, the compression that we would have between Option Two and Option Three. And yes, when we cap people at midpoint, we do see more compression, because obviously, people are compressed from midpoint to maximum over a longer period of time. But when I looked at it, I actually made a whole bunch of charts, and I compared the charts to each other. And let me tell you, our current salaries are like, it feels like a Rorsch test, they're all over the place. So, irregardless of what path we do, we get a nice little plateau. So, Option Two and Option Three both really take care of a lot of our internal inequities. What you find is that, when I looked at it, the compression was most seen in the B-22 and B-23 ranges. So, that was, those were the ranges that, I mean, I want to say, when I looked at the salary ranges, probably 90 to 95% of them, my little charts were identical between Option Two and Option Three. B-22 and B-23 were the main where I saw it. You know, from a human resources standpoint, either is, either option is, is valid, and according to human resources rules, either option really is fine. I don't feel that the compression that we would see in Option Two makes it unviable, but I also am not going to stand up here and tell you that there is not more compression under Option Two than Option Three, because it's factually accurate.
Becky, just wondering if people in the audience have, have anything to say? We certainly would be glad to hear from the audience. Thank you.
You know, when, when I look at this, and, and I'm looking at it from the perspective of, you know, my department and the labor force that I have, and my, a couple of my major concerns, one is the compression issues. We do currently have internal equity issues, and the other one is our long-term employees. If we have an employee under Option Two who's sitting at maybe 18 to 20 years, he comes to the midpoint, I mean, he's going to have to work another 10 years before he gets to the top of the pay scale, right? So, we're saying that people can reach the top of the pay scale in 20 years, but our current long-term employees were saying, well, you have to work to 30 years. That's, that's an issue. And we also are looking at retention issues. So, when we hire new people and bring them on, I think bringing them into the steps is going to correct that issue. I think only bringing people to the midpoint with our current employees and not really where they should be in the pay scale is going to create a retention issue for us. And it's something, and we talk about the infrastructure budgets, and I've been up here many times talking about the budgets for the infrastructure and how we need those, but if I had to choose between the infrastructure and the people that we have within the city and keeping them in order to maintain the city, I would choose the people that we have. And if, if I have to give up some infrastructure budget to make that happen for the next couple of years until we can make this, I would support that wholeheartedly. If I had to take some of my cost savings away from Seal Coat to make this work for the first year or two, I would wholeheartedly do that and support that. And so, it, this does come down to budget, I realize that, like most things do, but there's a far-reaching aspect of this when we hire people and we retain people. The idea in the public sector is that we retain people for the longevity. That's really why, why they come here. We are going to have pay increases, otherwise, this is something that we can step people into and make them whole, because I feel like we have a workforce that has been misaligned, and I feel that the decisions that are made with the Option Three would make these people whole and would, would create a better work environment for the long term. So, thank you.
I just, I, can I just?
Sure.
Can, I just want, what happens to the 28 to 26 people that are redlined in, in Option Three? Are we just shifting problems? I mean, that, that's, that's an issue, I mean, we, the issue right now is redline people, and if we're, you know, Option Two, we have how many? I, I don't know, I'm trying to figure out where are the most people going to benefit? And I, you know, I worry when I hear 26, up to 26 people in Option Three will be redlined. That's, that's the point, I want to understand that.
You want to understand as far as why would they be redlined, or I guess I'm not...
No, I'm just trying to understand, you know, how, how, are we just shifting a problem?
Sure, well, I mean, one of the items that the current wage study was intended to address were those individuals who are maxed out in their current ranges, and being maxed out, they haven't received annual increases. And so, with the, and so, what we did was realigned wages with market values, and the, with Option Three, if we are moving people within the step, several people would be moved to the top of the range, and they would be redlined. So, you'd have up to 26 employees who would get an increase this year and then not receive any increases unless the wage scales themselves were adjusted again, likely to happen in another five years. And assuming that market at that time indicated that the scale was off and needed to be adjusted, if not, it could potentially last longer than that. Go ahead, Dawn.
My only comment is, I just, I agree with Eric, and I'm all for Option Three. I feel that these workers have been pushed aside for too many years, and I'll tell you, we cannot run a city if we don't have the staff out there working. I don't want to see the people that we do have leave for another position for more money, especially if they've been working here for a long time. We deserve to give them whatever we can and make it right for them. That's how I feel.
So, hearing that, I'll make a motion that we move with Option Three, and that we continue to, with the, with the fiscal aspect of, of course, is very important with regard to the Finance Committee, but I think that my option, my motion would be then to move on with Option Three, meeting appropriately with the Finance Committee and Administration, City Administration, to see exactly where we go. I think that, so that would be my motion. So, then I would ask for a second, but I, just with regard to the, I would like at a future meeting for us to really get a clear understanding of what redlining means with regard to especially the, you know, so does that mean for five years, or does the chart get changed, or, or how do we deal with that from year to year to year? I think that a person being redlined for five years is a little bit, is not just a little bit, which is way too much. So, I think we have to talk about that at another time, but I, my motion is to move ahead with Option Three, and that, and let's see where we go with the finances.
First of all, I would second the motion. I would also ask that pursuant to Eric's suggestion, that Administration and various department heads all kind of look at how they might be able to add to the pot, if you will. Question of redlining, it, it's weird on me, because, you know, I still think in terms of performance reviews and, and what happens to a redlined person. Do they ever get performance reviewed, or they get a great performance review, but no, no raise commensurate with it? I'm not a fan of that, and I think we've talked in the past about a, a system that incorporated, you know, performance review. So, where's the incentive?
Sure, well, I can actually, I'm not sure if we wanted to address the redlining now before the vote. I think so. But, so essentially, when we approved the salary ranges, we said this is the maximum that a particular job is worth. And when an employee reaches that amount, they do not advance beyond what a job is worth based on the duties and responsibilities of that position. So, short of the duties and responsibilities being performed, the worth of that job would not change, and the city does not grant increases that exceed that maximum allotment. So, at the time that an employee reaches the maximum pay range for a position, they are no longer eligible for annual increases. Unless the responsibilities change, the job is reclassified, and it falls within a different salary range, at which time, then you would have the opportunity to grow. Another option would be that when we do a market analysis, and we find that our salary ranges are no longer aligned with market, we would do the process that we're doing now, where we realign the range to market, and at that time, you now have additional room to grow. What we're doing today with Option Three is artificially moving people within the range, which is something that we have not previously done with wage studies, and by doing that, we're basically bumping people up to their maximum pay rates at this time. So, those individuals would be ineligible for increases until such time as it was determined that the market had moved for their position. They would still receive annual, annual reviews, but those reviews would not be tied to compensation.
I'm not going to, and if you can get me, I, I have probably spent more time on this than any other thing that I've done in the last six months. Honestly, I, I've spent a lot of time in, on phones and understanding this, and it's a, it's a business. a, it's a business. We're in a business. It's not fun. I, I've personally, I have personally lived through this with compression issues, with new people making more than me after I had worked at a place for seven years with institutional knowledge. I get it, I get it a hundred percent. But my question, and it's not gonna be popular, but if somebody, I would like to see a longevity program or something that we can tie in other than this, because how can we say to somebody that a job description that has job performance things, you know, specific things, has a never-ending pay scale? Because of time? Because of longevity? I mean, it isn't fair, but that's why businesses don't even do it. They shove people out and get new people. It isn't what we should do, so what can we do? The wage study tells us that. You know, they're saying, this is, that's why redlining is happening, this job isn't worth anymore. But we have long-term people who give us great service, what can, and so, either we're gonna have to not have wage studies anymore that tell us what we should be paying, or we should find a hybrid like Tom said, and find a longevity program or something tied into bonuses. I don't think redlining is the right way. But no matter if we're option two or option three, there are people that will not get raises every year, and they could do, you know, just excellent job. How can we make that, that right? You know, I mean, we're, we're just pushing people, okay now, but we're gonna have the same people come back to us in a year or two, I'm not getting raises. And how do we, how do we stop that from happening? That's, that's my issue, and I don't think either option two or option three, you know, either one is not gonna be fair to some people. And I, I, I just worry about that because we have, you know, that's why everybody looked at, all the department heads looked at every, you know, job description, trying to make sure those are correct because that's what is driving that wage study. I mean, I'm just asking the question is how, you know, how do we do this? How do we make it fairer to people that decide to stay long-term? Because it, it may be okay now, but, you know, talking about kicking the can, it's, it's gonna be the same in two years when these people can't get any higher. I don't know, just questions.
Well, I, I think we kinda touched on the subject in our last meeting, I think I might have brought it up, in terms of our more tenured individuals whose, you know, like you say, institutional knowledge, we, we value highly and don't want to see them hit a ceiling, you know. One thing we know is everybody's interested in, in growth. And everybody sees growth where they don't wanna see it, in all their bills, all their health insurance, you know, the cost of everything that they consume, that keeps going up, it's not turning around. And for somebody who has hit a ceiling after dedicating, you know, a better part of their life to the city, and we talk about, well, what does the market bear? What's, what's that job worth? Well, I'll tell you one thing, that somebody who is, who has that job experience, that, that resume, there's gonna be somebody out there that'd be glad to pay them five thousand dollars more or ten thousand dollars more, based on what they bring to the table in their knowledge and experience. And so the market, you know, the market is not a hard and fast thing. The market is, is fluid. There's players in the market with deeper pockets than others. We know that, there's always gonna be competition, and we can't, you know, outbid everybody. We can't outbid all competition. But, you know, I, I just sit here, I'm, I'm hearing what Eric is saying, and I, I put a lot of weight into it, and I'm, I'm worried about people feeling like, well, there's nowhere to go from here now because they've been redlined unless they find a new skill, you know? And then if they do that, then maybe we lose them too. And, and now we have to fill that hole. So, I'm not, I know it's not, not easy, I know it's been rough, and, and I tend to be, you know, Joe, you know, Blue Sky, but I'd sure like to find a solution to this.
My other, my only other fear is, is, you know, we had the finance director up here, is that what I don't want to happen is what happened before, that we end up with a wage freeze and then everybody stops. That's, that's another thing that's, you know, that I've talked about in the last couple of months with, with staff, you know, and I, it's, it's easy to say, we'll try to find it or we'll find it. I mean, I wish we could find it for a lot of things. I just, you know, that would be the easy way, well, we'll just do a wage freeze or whatever, and I may not even be here anymore, but that's what, and that's another concern. And I talked to employees that called me, and I said, you know, that's my concern. I wanna make sure that the most, I can help the most bulk of employees for the longest time with whatever we choose, because I, I get it, but, you know, it, this isn't easy stuff. And I, I've had sleepless nights over this, trying to figure out what's the best for, for everyone, and how are we going to maintain it long-term? That's an issue, so.
I didn't know if I was able to come up and keep speaking after he moved, I didn't know if there was gonna be a vote. My name's Kurt Dubor, I, I'm an engineering technician here at City of Oaxaca. In March I'll have twenty-three years. I am one of those employees that Eric spoke of. If option two is chosen, from what I can understand, and like I said, I'm not, I've only had this information for a very short time, I may be interpreting it incorrectly, but because of your vote on accepting the new pay ranges and classifications at the December tenth meeting, I now fall, after almost twenty-three years back again, below the midpoint of my pay scale. So I am one of those few that probably would be in line if you went with option three to get one of those larger raises. Now, I had this whole thing prepared, and I'm kinda going off the cuff here, but when, if option two is chosen, I believe it was only twenty-two or twenty-four percent of the employees of the total would be getting a, you know, anything above the one-point-five percent if we went with option three. I thought it was somewhere in the thirty-some percent range, so it's not like every single employee is getting this huge handout of money. Although with option three, I think it puts every employee on the same playing field, and they have the opportunity to grow up in that pay scale and reach where the older employees may or may not get slotted in, I don't know where each one has been put, obviously that wasn't in here. But I just didn't know if I was able to get up and speak after you called for the motion and if there was gonna be a vote, but thank you, so.
Yeah, the, the percentage numbers are off a bit because it's probably calculating total employees, whereas we were calculating strictly the non-represented employees, which would, so it's, the percentage numbers are actually quite a bit higher of people who are affected. But if we choose to implement an option but not to do a step, we would have a large number of employees who would receive no increase, so.
So that's that. Is it, okay, so then between option two and option three, is it true that employee, that it would affect all employees?
No, neither option would affect all employees. I mean, there are a number of people, we had forty-two percent of employees who are currently earning higher wages than Gallagher determined they should, according to their calculations. So forty-two percent of employees, regardless of what option you got or not going to, you implement, would not be affected by the wage increase, other than seeing their salary ranges move, their current salaries would not be affected, so.
But they would still be in the step?
They could, they would receive a step increase.
Yeah.
Yes, but they would not receive anything via your implementation options. So the one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar difference would not, wouldn't, wouldn't reach those people. So we have forty-two percent of people that, what you do today doesn't matter, to put it in blunt terms.
And then how many people will be affected, go up in option two and option three?
Thirty people total are reached in option three that aren't reached in option two. Those that are funded by the levy is fifteen people. So basically, the difference between two and three, thirty people who wouldn't get anything would now get something under option three that didn't get anything under two. So, and percentage-wise, I mean, math on the cuff is not my strong suit, but we have one-hundred-and-seventy-seven non-represented employees, so it would be significantly less than half. I mean, it would be, what, a third? Mary Ann, can you do math on the top of your head? Okay.
Any more questions, or?
I'm just gonna say one last thing here, 'cause I think we're getting close to a vote. Because I also sit on the finance committee, and I know that, and I would have a feeling that option two is going to be, would be more fiscally responsible for the finance committee's standpoint, but since we've already have a motion seconded on option three, I am gonna lend my support to option three. Is I, I, I do see the value of getting our, our employees to where they need to be so that we can, you know, reward those that have served for, for a significant amount of time and also give us that ability to recruit new employees. So I'd put that out there.
I'd just like to be clear that implementation options would also not, would not affect future recruitments because the salary ranges are set. So where we move current employees wouldn't have a whole lot of impact on starting salaries for new candidates. That was established at the last meeting, but just to be clear.
Rick Molynetsky, Superintendent of Public Works. I just wanted to talk about retention and the institutional knowledge that my people have. And losing people to other communities is a real devastating thing because we've got so much invested, of twenty years of knowing how to do our operations. As it said in the report, that people don't learn this job overnight. And networking with other superintendents recently in the last couple of weeks, we have, I've had a number of discussions with other communities that, other communities that are paying more are stealing people or, you know, taking people from them. And it's real devastating to try to get a new person in. We've experienced this, we've actually taken on new employees and then got them CDL license, got them real valuable, got them trained in confined entry, trenching and excavating, CPR. They've got a resume that kicks butt, and they can go just about any place, in the private sector or in the public sector. And that's my concern, is that at least if the people get redlined, at least we're paying them what they're worth in the market now. And that's my concern, that we need to stay with that market now. And if they get redlined, at least we're paying them today of what they're worth in the market, and that's just what I had to say.
Anybody? Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to pick option three. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna say no. Thank you. It passes four to one.
All right, so.
Okay, we're up to discussion of possible action on implementation of a modified step system for annual increases.
All right, so for annual step increases, it got a little bit complicated because we were trying to calculate them for both option two and option three. But essentially, what we did was, at the last Human Resources Committee, the committee indicated that they wanted to do a modified step system to govern annual increases. And so what we've done is we've fleshed out a little bit more what that would look like. That system would include regular step increases, cost of living review conducted by Human Resources, and a minimum standard that must be met in order to qualify for a step increase. So Gallagher recommended that after implementation, employees should progress through the salary scale with three percent increases per year until they reach midpoint of the salary scale, at which point they would receive a three percent increase every other year. In order to return the city to a modified step system, employee salaries would need to be aligned with a step. So essentially, in the implementation options, you're moving someone to a salary, but that salary does not align with a step. So now on top of that, we need to artificially align employees with steps, and that's what would happen this year. That results in varied increases being granted in 2019 because employees are not, not receiving a full step, they're being moved to the next closest step. Annual costs regard, related to aligning employees were looked at, and, but first thing we did was we had to establish what the step system would look like. Essentially, we implemented Gallagher's recommendation with one minor change of instead of giving a three percent increase every other year, we calculated it as if it was a one-point-five percent increase annually. That was, I had a big concern that if we do freeze employees' wages, if it's my off week, if it's my off year, I didn't receive any freeze, but if it's my on year, I lost three percent. So basically, any freezes would disproportionately affect employees unless it was a freeze of, of an even number of years. So by dividing the three percent every other year into a one-and-a-half percent increase every year, it would help mitigate those costs. Also, we'd have to choose, does everybody get a three percent this year if you're after midpoint? Do half of you get? So this helps alleviate some of that pain point as well. It does add a little bit more cost because that one-point-five percent is compounded, but it is very negligible, we're talking about pennies on the dollar. So included in the packet is a draft of the salary steps that were used. Positions in the A and B bands would have sixteen total steps, and positions in the C and E bands would have twenty total steps. That's because some salary ranges are forty percent and others are fifty percent. So if you have a larger salary range, you have more steps. We can skip option two, so what we're gonna look at is option three, bring to step. Placing employees on an established step results in twenty employees reaching the maximum salary and being redlined for future salary increases. The percentage of increase for non-redlined employees ranged from point zero-three percent, so some people were pennies away from their next step for four employees, to a two-point-nine percent increase for two employees. So two employees were almost exactly a full step away, but other employees were within licking distance of their next step. So when we saw how minimal the increase would be for some employees, we looked at what the cost would be if we guaranteed a minimum one-point-five percent increase for everybody. So if we want to, so basically, if you're less than a one-and-a-half percent away from your next step, you would move an additional step. Eighty-one employees would receive an increase of less than one-point-five percent. So if we wanted to guarantee a minimum step increase of one-and-a-half percent this year, those employees would be moved to the next step, and that would result in an additional estimated levy impact of seventy-two thousand, five-hundred-twenty-four dollars and ninety cents, and a total of twenty-six employees reaching the maximum salary and being redlined for future salary increases. So essentially, if you're gonna look at fiscal impact, we've got the two options. Everyone can get a step increase, how small or large it may be, or we can guarantee a minimum one-point-five percent increase for everybody. It is my strong recommendation that step increases be granted on the job anniversary date. That has a number of implications. First of all, your eligibility for an increase is gonna depend on your annual review. And if your annual review is done a year after you've completed your job, your supervisor is more able to determine how well you're actually doing at that job. If we do it at a random point in the year, an employee could have just been promoted, and they're probably gonna get kinda low scores, and it could make them ineligible for a step increase. But of course, that would have a fiscal impact for this year, but not for future years. I suppose it's a good time at this point to talk about what an employee would have to do to qualify for a step increase. Under the current recommendation, an employee would qualify for an annual step increase if they've successfully completed their probationary period. Almost all of our positions have been granted a six-month probationary period, so the only way someone would remain on probation after they've been in their job for a year would be if their probation was extended, which usually is an indication that they're struggling in their position. An employee cannot be on a performance improvement plan to get a step increase. If they've been on a performance improvement plan for any portion of the year prior to their job anniversary, they would be ineligible for a step. An employee may not receive a suspension in the previous year or have received three or more written warnings. We, we actually checked and, and made sure, and, and it's- We actually checked and made sure and it's, it's a pretty high threshold. We don't have a lot of written warnings that are being issued. So this is not something that would inadvertently catch a lot of employees that weren't intended to be caught. They must also have a current employee review form completed and on file with the human resources department. And the employee review form would have to reflect that the employee is consistently not meeting performance standards. So to talk about the fiscal impact of the step increases. If they're deferred to the anniversary year, we would yield, or I'm sorry, anniversary date, we'd see a lot of savings. If we did it for the whole year, the cost would be between 90 and $162,000. But for this year, we'd see some savings if people had to wait for their anniversary to get an increase. And that would bring the cost to $24,000 to $47,000. That said, we will have to budget for full increases next year. It does make, moving to an anniversary date makes budget calculations a little bit more complicated. So I put forth a conservative estimate. And that would mean that for future years for the step increase, we'd have to be looking at about $240,000 to $242,000. And that number is going to increase by 3% every year. Any questions, thoughts between the 1.5 versus step increase?
I'm inclined to move to approve your recommendation.
I would ask because the recommendation does not speak to the step versus 1.5, that the motion be amended to also include?
The 1.5 on anniversary.
Looking for a second. Thank you, Don, second by Don. Any other questions or concerns? Okay, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Discussion and possible action on the wage study appeal process.
Okay, the next item that we had kind of tabled from the last meeting was how people would be able to appeal their classification. So that's kind of where their job falls in the salary ranges that were established at the last meeting. And so we did utilize an appeal process the last time a wage study was done. And upon review, that previous process was found to be pretty sound. So essentially we've just made some minor updates to the appeal process that was used last time. So essentially, once the implementation of the wage study is passed by council. Employees would have an opportunity to appeal where their position was classified. You can classify for two reasons. If you feel that your classification failed to recognize the major duties of your position. Something that you spend at least 5% of your time doing. Or if the duties of your position have changed significantly since the original job description was submitted for review. So if your job has changed a lot since the wage study was completed, then the changes could be brought forth and considered. Or if you feel like your job description or the classification failed to recognize something that you're doing, it could be considered on those grounds as well. Employees cannot appeal if they disagree with the decision band method process that was performed. If the appeal is based on the employee possession qualifications that are not required for the position. For example, if your job requires a high school diploma and you have a master's degree, fortunately, that's not going to get you a higher classification. You also can't appeal based on workload or volume or duties that you may be assigned at some point in the future. You also cannot appeal based on market data from other sources other than those used as part of the wage study. So the process for submitting appeals, employees would have one month to submit appeals. And all appeals must be received by the human resources in a timely manner in order to be considered. Employees should first discuss their classification concerns with their supervisor and department director. Employees wishing to engage in the appeal process would contact human resources and we'd get you a copy of your current job description. And also the form necessary to submit to lodge your appeal. The appealing employee would have to fill out the form completely. And department directors should review the form with employees and the frontline supervisor or manager if applicable. Department directors would need to certify that the submitted form accurately represents the content of the position with or without clarification. Appeals that are approved, so basically if your appeal meets the type of thing you're allowed to appeal upon. It would be reviewed by us to make sure it's on the right topic. If it's not on the right topic, the appeal would be denied. If it's on an appropriate topic, it would be advanced to the compensation consultant with a request for reevaluation. Upon receipt of the appeal evaluation from the consultant, the HR department would evaluate the recommendation for placement into the classification and compensation system. All employees submitting an appeal would be, receive a final decision in writing 60 days from the date of submitting the appeal. Our consultant has requested 30 days to review the document. So the bulk of that time is actually going to be for the consultant review. Any decisions on appeals would be final. And the responsibility of the human resources director. And so this form, to be honest, is almost identical to the one that was used last time. We made some minor alterations because the classification method has changed. So we changed point factor to decision band method. And we changed the time period at the request of the consultant to meet their needs. But otherwise, it's pretty much identical. Fiscal impact is impossible to determine at this time. It would depend on how successful any appeals would be. Any questions?
I have a question. So then consultant gets the package, so to speak, right? With regard, so then what, to make some kind of a decision, the decision is really in the hands, is the decision in the hands of the consultant? Or how does the consultants?
Sure.
Handoff to you or the human resources department reflect a final decision or maybe not a final decision?
The consultant would make a recommendation that would then be kind of vetted by HR. And so the final decision would lay with human resources. This is very similar to the process that we use with the department feedback. So basically we compiled the department feedback, they sent it on to the consultant. The consultant reapplied the decision band method according to the new information. And then they came back and said, like, this didn't change anything. Or this might have changed something depending upon your company structure. Or this definitely changed something and we recommend it. And that was then reviewed by the human resources department. And, you know, the recommendations were finalized. So we would undergo that same process for the appeals.
Might it, and I'm just wondering about the fluidity of the decision itself. Once the consultant makes the, you know, comes back. Does HR sort of change that? Or how does that, what's involved with the decision?
Sure.
The final decision?
I can tell you that based on how it went with the department feedback. The consultants' recommendations were usually in line with, you know, our feelings on the topic. So at this point, most of the feedback that we got back from the consultant was just fully implemented. Like we reviewed it, we found it to be sound and we implemented it. There were a couple of times where they said, eh, you know, we think it could go either way. And at that time, they said, we would recommend this if this is what your organization structure looks like. Or this, if this is more realistic, in which we would be making more of an evaluation. But those were relatively minor.
Anything else, otherwise we'll take a motion to accept. Thank you, Tom. A second? Thank you, Michael. All in favor? Aye. Thanks. Okay, and we're up to discussion of possible action on addressing future compression issues.
All right, so the last item that we kind of had on, or that I had on my tickler list for wage plan issues was compression that can be created between union represented and non-union represented positions. Usually, union represented positions and the general wage increases, it's very rare that they're exactly the same. You know, they vary between a little bit and a lot depending upon the year and the negotiation stance of various unions. So what can happen is that if your unions are receiving larger increases than your nonrepresented employees. Eventually, your represented employees catch up to their supervisors in salary. And so one of the things that I wanted to do was to formalize how that's going to be handled in the future. So the wage study has appropriately classified any non-union positions according to their current market. But they didn't necessarily make arbitrary changes to that according to our current union wages. So our current process is that the department has and human resources keep an eye on and regularly evaluate internal equity and potential pay compression issues. And in the past, when those items have been discovered, an agenda item has been brought before this commission. Basically asking for a salary adjustment for the nonrepresented employees to keep them ahead of the union employees. And so essentially what I've done is I've put together some language that formalizes that process. But that process would largely remain, I mean, basically we're going to continue our current practice, but, you know, we wrote it down.
Any questions? Concerns? Okay. We'll have a motion to accept this last policy. Thank you, Tom. Second? Thank you, Michael. Is everybody ready or you have some questions, Gary? Okay. I just wanted, I'm not, well, I was thinking of you. I just didn't want to try to brush you around. Okay. All in favor? Aye? And that passes. And that is it for our agenda? Any future agenda items? I'm sure she'll find some.
We'll try to keep it light.
Like, you know, maybe, just, you know, the issue of redlining into the future. You know, I just don't want this to become an issue down the road. So maybe just talking it out or coming to some type of an understanding of what redlining means into the future, I think would. Because I don't want, you know, I don't think it's good to have this lingering into the future, like you said, Becky. And I think we should at least know what's coming, what's coming in front of us. So that these issues will certainly be brought up front and acknowledged as we go forward.
The other question I have is now that this is, we are not, option three has passed. And it has not been fully funded as the other one. Does this now go to finance? And so then finance and then council. So, I won't even say that, what if? I don't want to do a what if. So, okay, after that, motion to adjourn. We have, we can, thank you. Thank you, Don. All in favor, say aye? Aye? This motion is, has gone. Bye-bye.